Thank you. Good evening, councilors. I'd like to welcome everyone to our December 13th meeting of the full city council. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on computer or device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's a finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as councilors do not condone language that is discriminatory or offensive and will not accept it at our city council meeting. I'd like to announce the names of the city councilors and so the staff who are present on the call. Scott Memard, Ward one, city councillor. We've got Jason Grow at large councillor. We've got Tony Gross at large city councillor, Frank Majota, Ward three city councillor, Jeff Worthley at large city councillor, Sean Nolan, Ward five city councillor and council vice president and councillor O'Hara, who is at large. We also have Jill Cahill, who is our CEO, CAO, and it's her birthday today, so I'm not sure if she's going to stay on for the whole call, but we wish her a happy birthday. And we have John Dunn, who is our CFO, and we have Joanne Sinos, who is our city clerk, Ryan Markey, who is our IT director.
No, city engineer.
City engineer, I'm sorry, Ryan.
That's a different Ryan.
Ryan Marks.
Okay, thank you. Ryan Marks, sorry, on two, for two reasons, thank you. And Tracy O'Neill just joined us, who is our Ward two city councillor. Before we begin, I'm going to ask to do a moment of silence for Judy Bidwell, who passed away the end of November. On the 10th day of November, our city council presented her with a citation for her tremendous amount of volunteerism that she's done for the community. And we recognized her for outstanding citizenship and her love for our community. Over the 10 years that she had been a volunteer for the Open Door, including firing and preparing bowls for the Empty Bowl fundraiser, serving as a hostess for the Cape Anne Plenea Cape Anne Museum Art of Lunch programs, a generous donor to the Howard Blackburn Challenge. In addition, she had been a volunteer at the Rockport Music Chalaloo Gloucester Legion Holiday Meals, and perhaps her favorite activity was as a volunteer for generous gardeners. We were asked to present something to her when she was in her final days in hospice at Seacoast by my ward constituent colleague, who is Nina Goodick, and all of the councilors signed a card, including Mayor Verga, and presented it in front of, with Judy, and she opened her eyes and she heard it and she smiled. And her husband was there, her son and her sister, and it was very moving. So I just wanted to do a brief moment of silence for a very special unsung hero who did so much good for the city and remember her with affection. So let's have a moment of silence for Judy Bidwell. Thank you, councilors. First order of business, Madam Clerk.
Well, communications.
Thank you. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The city council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak to us for up to three minutes on matters not on the agenda, besides a barking dog? Okay, we have Bob Shay. Madam Clerk, would you bring Bob in? Bob, if you would introduce yourself in your dress, and you have up to three minutes to speak to us.
Okay, I will be brief. Thank you all for listening. Just by way of introduction, my name is Bob Shay. I'm a lifelong resident of Gloucester. My wife and I have lived at 27 Grapevine Road for 45 years. We have two adult children who also own homes in Gloucester, and five grandchildren that are all in college. I think it's fair to say that our family is indigenous to Gloucester, and that we're all Gloucesterites and very proud of it. By now, I believe you've well received my correspondence dated November 17th, it was directed to the city engineer concerning the development that's ongoing at Eight Orchard Road, neighbors on Orchard Road, Grapevine Road, and some on Ledge Road, by concern about what is happening there. What started out to be a five single home project, which probably would be fine, seems to have taken on a life of its own, and become a multi-unit development with 37 bedrooms in total. There are density concerns, and I will just briefly go over them. One, the property is only two and a half acres, and the potential exists for 74 more people being squeezed into that area. The proposal calls for five, each 2,000 gallon septic tanks, each on a two inch line fitting into a three inch line on Grapevine Road. This may not be adequate to handle the excess volume. I would like to know also how many, you know, homes are already on this three inch line. It's been in existence probably for about 10 years, 10 or maybe more. Another concern is parking. There's a potential for 75 plus vehicles, and will the roads be improved as a result of this project? Both roads, Orchard Road and Grapevine Road are already in just repair, and increased traffic will not make the situation any better. There's also concerns about water usage and water pressure as a result of this increased community effort. Will there be enough water, even especially during a drought, to be able to service all the abutters on Grapevine Road? Gas and electricity services, are they adequate to handle the extra volume? Is the height restriction front and side, yeah, it's like back, so are they all going to be up to code? Can the area handle additional storm drainage and runoff? So it boils down to a density problem affecting the city infrastructure. Well, my concern is Eight Orchard Road. I'm sure all future projects in the city will have the same generic issues going forward. Lastly, from my personal perspective, what has been presented initially as a single, five single homes has changed from multi-unit project. A developer comes to town, buys property, has a basic plan, changes it, builds it, makes his money, moves on, and leaves all these problems behind for the neighborhood to resolve, changes the whole dynamic of the neighborhood. Somehow, it just doesn't seem quite fair to the city. If it is permitted, then the developer should be asked to pay for infrastructure costs associated with it. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate you being on the call. Would anyone else like to speak to the council for up to three minutes on matters not on the agenda? Seeing none, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
I'd like to turn the control of the meeting over to Sean Nolan, who will lead this, and I believe you're going to call upon Council Grow as well. So, thank you, Council Nolan.
Thank you, Madam President, and I will call upon Jason Grow to read his motion on his 23.
Council Grow, can you unmute yourself?
Thank you. Out of an abundance of caution and desire to make sure there's no conflict of interest appearance, I have had three occasions over the last two years to work with Lanes Cove and Theater as a professional photographer, and I wanted to make sure that that was made known to the committee or to the council. I filed a 20, what is it, a section 23B3 filing with the Ethics Commission in Massachusetts, Massachusetts Ethics Commission outlining that this does not pose a conflict of interest for me in terms of my voting on Lily Narbone to the Gloucester Cultural Council. Her qualifications speak for themselves, and our intermittent professional interactions have zero to do with her qualifications to be on the council or my ability to vote for her impartially. So.
Thank you, councillor. Back to Council Nolan.
So Lily, how you doing tonight?
Hi, good. Thanks for having me.
Well, no, thank you for having us. If you just want to give a brief description of where you're at and why you want to be on the committee?
Yeah, I think I might have to wave to my dad and tell him not to come in and let the dogs in loudly. Sorry. Well, I have been coming to Gloucester my entire life, and then during college, began growing here, and now have the privilege of living here and being a resident. And so, before I even was a full-time resident or started a theater company, I was involved culturally, and this place is such a source of joy and also heritage for me. My great, great, not my great great, my great grandmother was the honky tonk piano player with the, you know, the nickname Knuckles O'Toole. Her name was Mary Cludier, but at the rudder. So, Rocky Neck and the scene, artistic scene there was really her thing in her retirement, you know, after her husband died. And that's always been part of my family, you know, what we love about being here and having our family connected to here. So, this is a place that means a lot to me, and as an artist and a human, I just want to honor it and give back. And I also am proudly looking forward to being someone who other culture bearers can come to and say, hey, I'd like to do this. Hey, may I do this? Or, hey, can you advocate for us? You know, our voices are marginalized. What can you do to, you know, help us further our contribution to culture in Gloucester? And yeah, I, we a business, the Lanes Cove and Theater Co., that is a 2022 recipient of all council grant. I can be impartial because I am, you know, involved and committed to the culture of Gloucester in many other ways. And my personal, I guess, resume, you could say, as a cultural person, is much more than my theater company. Yeah, I guess that's all.
Excellent. Thank you, Lily. Before I read the motion, is there any questions or comments from the council? All right, we have Tony Gross with his hand up. Tony Gross.
Yeah, hi Lily. Thanks for the trip down memory lane. Knuckles quite well, and my mother had the shop, the track of a zander, right above the rudder. So, on the heyday of Rocky Neck, we were down there in the thick of it with Evy and her kids, Susan and Paula. It was, it was quite an act going on in that building. So, thank you for that.
Oh my gosh. Well, I'd look, I'd like to know more myself, because there's, you know, being only one when she passed away. Technically, there isn't so much I know other than story, but I love that. And I'm not so much of a ham as her, you know, like she is unparalleled. So I look forward to hearing more of that. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Lily. Thank you, councillor Gross. So, without any objection, I'd like to read.
Councillor?
Yes, go ahead, council president.
All right. So I was just hoping, because our CAO is here, if she could just say a few words about why she is introducing this wonderful candidate, Lily, to our council to be considered. So if that's with your permission, Council Nolan, can we ask her to speak?
Of course, council president, but as always, they can always raise their hand and will acknowledge it.
Yes, sorry, I was not expecting you to ask me. My husband's asking me about my birthday dessert. Sorry. Obviously, I think it's clear why Lily is the candidate for the council for this position. And sorry, you caught me by surprise, council president. Yeah, sorry. She's obviously more than connected to this community and a super important part of what we do. So we're thrilled to bring her forward and glad to bring diversity to the committee. So thank you so much for being interested and committed.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jill. Enjoy your big, your birthday. So now we'll read the motion. And the motion on a motion by councillor Majota, seconded by councillor Nolan. The ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, O'Hara, to recommend the city council appoint Lily Narbone to the Gloucester Cultural Council, term to expire 2/14/25, and I so move.
Again.
Motions made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion? Council Worthley?
Yes. So I'm happy to support Lily and very grateful to see someone from the Performing Arts on the arts committees in Gloucester. I just want to clarify how we pronounce her last name. I know that there's Italian. I just, I think it's Narbone. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's French, so more like Narbonne.
Narbonne. Okay. I just want to make sure we all got that right out of the gate so that we reference you correctly.
But don't worry, it's been a lifetime thing for me, so.
Thank you for your contributions. I'll be supporting your nomination.
Any other discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Memard.
Yes. Please support you, Lily.
Yes, thank you, Lily.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes, thank you, Lily.
Council Gross?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, Council Grow, I think I mixed you two up. I'm sorry.
Absolutely, yes.
Council Majota?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Welcome, Lily.
Thanks. Thank you.
Next order of business, but before we do that, I would just like to take three matters out of order. First, I would like to focus on the attention for those that might be here for the public hearing on the the $19 million loan order for the police station and for the courthouse renovation. And we are going to be continuing that until January 10th, 2023. So in case anybody is on the call for that purpose, you don't need to stay. We will state that again when it comes up at the public hearing such section of the agenda, but I just didn't want you to be hanging in there to learn that it's been continued. Next, before we get to the consent agenda approval, we have two matters that are up for council vote tonight, and we are going to move to withdraw them. But first, I'd like our city clerk, Joanne Sinos, to explain to the councilors and to the public who might be interested, why we are withdrawing these.
Thank you, thank you, council president. So according to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5, Paragraph 2, the planning board in the city council must hold a public hearing within 65 days after the amendment is submitted to the planning board. Due to an oversight, I would say on my part, the 65th day was not calculated in time. So in order to do this properly, we were advised by general counsel to withdraw this order, and it's on the agenda to resubmit again to the planning board and to the P and D in order to correct this timeline. So that is the reason why we are withdrawing this order. It was referred out on November 9th, and to waive the notice to the abutters and to set the public hearing, I think for January 28th. And the 65th day was before the January 28th city council meeting next year. So that is the reason why we are withdrawing this order and resubmitting it on the consent agenda again.
And just to explain that a little bit more to new councilors, the 65th day allows us, we can open the public hearing and then continue it. So we can, we can do that and not actually have to start the public hearing. We just have to open it and then continue it. But we needed to withdraw this. And so we've been requested by our general counsel to actually vote this as, so I moved to withdraw. City Council 2022-034-Worthley, amend GZO Section 5.22, Commercial Land-Based Wind Energy Conversion Facility, Section 5.22.14, Monitoring and Maintenance. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Gilman, seconded by, I think, was it Worthley? By Nolan, thank you. And we will do, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Memard?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
The motion succeeds. Nine in favor, zero opposed to withdraw it. And so the next matter that I wanted to bring up is City Council 2022-035-Gross, amend the GZO by adding a new section 5.32, short-term rentals. And that too needs to be withdrawn, and we did want to state that that order will be resubmitted as a code of ordinance amendment and not a zoning amendment. So I move to withdraw.
Second.
Second, I think was councillor Majota, yes? No, I wasn't, I wasn't looking up.
Council Worthley.
Council Worthley. Okay, thank you. Gilman, and then Council Worthley seconded. No discussion? Council Grow?
I just noticed that this has not yet been, is not resubmitted on this consent agenda, correct? It'll be resubmitted in January?
That is correct for this one. Yep. The other one is resubmitted tonight, the first one that we did. So you are correct. Any other discussion matters? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yep.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. So now we will get to the next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the consent agenda?
Councilors, does anyone wish to pull any matter off the consent agenda? I would like to remove City Council 2022-037-Worthley, amend GZO Section 5.22, Commercial Land-Based Wind Energy Conversion Facility, Section 5.22.14, Monitoring and Maintenance, refer P and D and planning board to waive the notice to abutters and set the public hearing. So I'd like to remove that one. And I would also like to remove GZO Section 1.11.2A, of proposed zoning amendments by deleting GZO Section 5.5 Lowlands and replacing with a new Section 5.5 Flood Plane Overlay District, and amending Sections 1.5, 1.8, 5.8, 5.9, and 5.15 to introduce potential flooding impacts as a permit review criteria. So anyone else would like to remove anything from the consent agenda before we vote it? Okay, we will vote the consent agenda without these other two matters, and then we'll go back to them. So, Council Memard?
Move to accept.
Thank you. Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
The consent agenda passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. And now we're back to the two items that I removed. So, the first matter, which is City Council 2022-037-Worthley, I would like to advise the city council that this affects the entire city, and given that the notice to all abutters in the city and the situation is impracticable, I move that the city council waive the notice to abutters under GZO Section 1.11.4B, set the public hearing date for February 14th, 2023, and to refer this matter to the planning and development and the planning board. And I so move.
Second.
That was, I heard, Council Worthley's motion made by Gilman. Is there any question, councilors? And I do want to just mention something here, because there was a little question about this at the last meeting that we had. We have 15,000 residents in Gloucester who have homes. So when we have a ordinance, a zoning ordinance that affects, could affect everyone at some, at some point in the whole city, $15,000 times postage and certified mail is not practicable. However, it doesn't negate our requirement to post all of these public hearings on the website as we do, and notice it in the newspaper as we do. And so it's important that people know that we're not really taking a shortcut in terms of the recommendation of notice, but rather just noticing the abutters, because it would be about $15,000 for this to occur every time that we had this type of a zoning ordinance. So, new councilors, is that clear to you why we are doing that? It's a very good question, and people were confused last time. So I just don't want that to be the case. All right. So the motion's been made and seconded. So let's do a roll call vote. Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Okay. The motion has been passed. Nine in favor, zero opposed. And then finally, the final item that I asked to remove is, is similar. So I'm advising the city council that a planning board initiative in accordance with GZO Section 1.11.2A of proposed zoning amendments by deleting GZO Section 5.5 Lowlands, replacing it with a new Section 5.5 Flood Plane Overlay District, and amending Sections 1. and amending Sections one point five, one point eight, five point eight, five point nine, and five point one five to introduce potential flooding impacts as a permit review criteria affects the entire city. And given that notice to all abutters in the city and the situation is impracticable, I move that the city council waive the notice to a butter.
Gloucester Val? Going to pick up there, Sean?
In the city, in the situation is impractical, she. She'll move.
I'm back. Sorry, I don't know why that happened. Where, where did, where did I end off?
You were, I will move.
City in a situation is impractical.
Okay, thank you, Council Nolan. And I move that the city council waive the notice to abutters under GZO Section one point one, one point four B, set the public hearing date for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and refer this matter to the Planning, Development, and Planning Board, and I so move.
Second. Second.
Second by Council Nolan, thank you. And I want to just begin the, the discussion on this because there's another thing that I want to mention for the record. I'd like to correct page one eighty in our packet. And there was one word that was incorrect. And I've spoken to Gray Katamatory today as well as Rick Noonan. So if you look at the December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two document, which is on page one eighty of this very fat packet, the first line says, "The Gloucester Planning Board held a duly noticed remote public hearing on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two." And I, I request that we remove the word hearing, and it should have said meeting. It was a public meeting. It was not a hearing. And I've spoken to both of them, and that was just, it was a Scribner's error on this cover sheet. So I just want to be very clear that the public hearing for the planning board will occur at their meeting in January. And that, that process will occur before it comes back to us and P and D for consideration. Council Nolan has his hand raised on the discussion.
It's actually more on the, the Scribner's error and going back where it says she will move. It should have said I will move, as you stated, not she will move.
Oh, because I'm talking about me. Thank you. So do I need to amend that, or is everybody okay if we change that to I move? Thank you, Council Nolan. I appreciate that. All right, so everybody clear on that? And I would totally encourage all the city counselors to listen to that October twentieth P and D meeting. Because that will help you understand a lot of the background of this that's coming at us now. Because this is a pretty big zoning ordinance right now that we're going to be looking at. And the more aware we are of why and how, and, and we have the benefit of Zoom. And I watched it yesterday in its entirety, and it is very helpful to understand what's coming at us. Because people, the three of the wards are going to be affected by this. And, and we need to know exactly what the totality of, of this ordinance is all about and understand it. So the more we get up to speed, the more qualified we will be to handle this when it gets to P and D after Planning Board makes their final recommendation after a public hearing. Council Grow?
Not to be nitpicky, but you, you mentioned it's the October twentieth Planning Board meeting. You'd said P and D, and I don't want people looking for P and D.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the Planning Board meeting. Thank you. Okay, so a motion's been made. It was seconded. We changed it to I instead of she. Thank you, Council Nolan. So roll call vote, Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you, Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Gross?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm. Council Majota?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. So thank you. So we've approved the consent agenda and the two matters that we removed. And it took a while, but I think everyone understands now what it means when something is impracticable, that we have to vote to, to, to waive that because of the high expense. So thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of December eighth?
Thank you, and I will turn control of the meeting happily over to Scott Memard, our Chair, B and F. Thank you.
And I'll try and speak my, my words rather than having Counselor Gross jump in or Counselor Worthy on my behalf. Fortunately, I'm feeling better after four weeks of congestion. And I, I would comment that this was, I believe, our third fully hybrid meeting at the Gloucester Harbor Masters Office. So people were present physically, and the committee was all in attendance. And then Sherry Carvalos also, our Clerk of Committees, brought people in virtually. As we were reviewing again more of the CPA applications, this worked out very smoothly. It was a real pleasure to have our, our hybrid capacity for public meetings moving ahead, you know, constructive and basically seamless way. So thank you all, and thank you, Ryan and Sherry. We have three items from Budget and Finance for your consideration this evening. Our December eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Firstly, a memorandum from the city clerk, SBT two thousand and twenty-three eight in the amount of one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. I'm going to go ahead and read the motion. It's pretty self-supporting. And if there are any questions, Joanne can address them. But on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council approve a special budgetary transfer, two thousand and twenty-three SBT eight in the amount of one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars from registration salaries and wages temporary, account number is noted, to the DPW facilities, maintenance, overtime labor, account number is noted. And this is for the purpose of reimbursement for the custodial overtime in school polling locations for the September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two primary election and the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two state election. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Scott Memard, seconded by Tony Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors?
Would Joanne like to just summarize what this entails from her point of view?
Sure. So in our FY twenty-three budget, as in every year, we put into the custodial overtime. And what we have to do is the custodians are paid out of the DPW facilities account, and we have to reimburse that cost. We put the cost in our budget, so we know how much elections cost. So we're just asking for reimbursement from our account to the DPW account. And this is for the school polling locations for both elections this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Council Memard?
Thank you. The second item from Budget and Finance tonight is a memorandum from our Public Health Director. And we were pleased to welcome Mary Ellen Rose, our new health director, at the meeting. And she has requested our acceptance of a Mass Department of Public Health Prevention in Early Childhood Grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. I'll go ahead and read the motion, if that's all right?
Thank you.
Motion by myself, accepted by Counselor Worthy. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A a federal grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration passed through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, a prevention in early childhood services grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars over a twenty-four month timeframe for the purpose of supporting the development of an early childhood work group through the existing Regional Youth Prevention Network to include prenatal, postpartum, and early childhood providers. This fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three grant period for expenditure of these funds is a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars from September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four grant period for expenditure of these funds is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from July first, two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five grant period for expenditure of these funds is thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from July first, two thousand and twenty-four through September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. And there is no local match requirement for this grant, and I so move.
A motion made by Council Memard was seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Final B and F order of business, Council Memard?
Yes, our, our third item, moving on from substance abuse grants, we're now looking at the Shellfish Constable requesting acceptance of a fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Great Marsh Green Crab Trapping Program grant in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. This is a repeat grant in the Shellfish Constable addressed committee. We, we made a motion by myself, accepted by Counselor Gross, for Budget and Finance Committee voting three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a state grant from the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game Division of Marine Fisheries, a fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Great Marsh Green Crab Trapping Grant in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of providing a program to legally collect, remove, and dispose of invasive European green crabs from the coastal marine and estuary, estuary waters within its jurisdiction. The grant period is from November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and there is no match required, and I so move. Okay.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Council Grow?
It touched on much on the grant, but I would like to take this opportunity to point out and advise people to take a look at the, the documentary film that was done by our local filmmaker and photographer, Newbar Alexanderian, called Recipe for Disaster. It's on the green crabs in the Great Marsh. And it is well worth seeing the firsthand from this film what can happen when green crabs invade your local Great Marsh. It ain't pretty. So again, it's the recipe for disaster, and it's Newbar Alexanderian. You can look it up online. I suggest you all take a peek.
Council Memard?
Following up on Counselor Gross's comments, we had a good conversation with Pete Semenera, our Shellfish Constable. He did point out that, I mean, this provides incentive for several or a few local fishermen outfitted with these traps, which requires an investment on their part. Gives them an incentive to put some time into helping eradicate them. It's, it's, it's not gaining ground, it's holding ground at this point. More effort would be helpful in terms of the preservation of our Great Marsh. And in response to our inquiry, he did confirm that of the, the other four, the other three of our four coastal communities do, do use money from their own budgets to match this grant program in order to further incentivize the efforts. And that we would like to make note of that in terms of next year's budget. Thank you.
That's great, and I would just like to add that last summer, there was a fascinated, fascinating article that was in the Boston Sunday Globe Magazine on this. And I was really proud to see that we were being recognized, our Shellfish team, including, I think her name is Rebecca Visneck, who also is, you know, works hand in hand with our Shellfish Warden, and it was fascinating. And I will also share with you, I was at the Beaufort Hotel two weeks ago having dinner. And, and they were serving green crab chowder, which was just... So when I read that, I'm like, oh, my gosh, this is like, these are the crabs that we don't like, but should I try? But anyway, little, little off topic, but.
No, there's, there's a thin market for them, but that is one of.
I decided to have clam chowder and not the green crab. It was interesting. Any further discussion, counselors? Council Nolan?
I'd like to add a little bit to the discussion, too. There's a distillery in New Hampshire that is doing a green crab whiskey. There's other restaurants that are serving green crab type stuff. But the issue is that green crabs are evasive, and they're not good for our environment. So I think we need to look into the study and look into whether we should be farming them to, to serve or trying a way to protect our wetlands. So me personally, I'm happy that this is going through. And well, that we're voting on it, but I, I do think that it, it is a situation that's not good for us. And even though some people find some way of making money off of it, it still does disturb our coastlines and our marsh.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, our roll call vote, Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Absolutely.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is the ordinance and rest wishes, we can be ordered December fifth?
Council Nolan?
We have no items to be heard tonight.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Planning and Development Standing Committee order December seventh.
Council Grow?
We also have no items, but I, I'd like to think that we set a record for the longest poll petition public hearing that I hope, I hope never to be broken. So that was it. But other than that, we got nothing to vote on.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is the first scheduled public hearing, public hearing two thousand and twenty-two zero thirty-four, loan order two thousand and twenty-two zero zero nine, loan authorization in the amount of nineteen million dollars for the Gloucester Police Station and the Courthouse Facility renovation.
Thank you, and I'd like to open the public hearing and continue it until the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Public hearing two thousand and twenty-two dash zero three five, amendment to loan order two thousand and twenty dash zero zero six, loan authorization in the amount of four million seven hundred thousand dollars for the Gloucester Water Pollution Facility Flood Mitigation Project.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if any member of administration want to speak in favor. Our CFP's John Dunn. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you very much. So this is a situation where a number of years ago, when we started putting this together, we thought that we knew what it was going to cost. But as everybody knows, things have gone upwards, unfortunately. So we have to add a little bit to this. So there's already a loan order in place. We're going to amend it in order to increase the amount that was appropriated. And I'm actually going to hand this off to Ryan Marks, city engineer, to talk a little bit more about where, how we ended up in this position.
Thank you, John. Welcome, Ryan.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, so bids went out two months ago. They came back right before Thanksgiving. It was competitive. We had, I believe, seven bidders. The low bidder came in around four million dollars. That with the engineering costs brings us to four point five, and we need a little bit of cushion in there for contingency for what could come up during construction. And that's how we get to the four point seven number John mentioned. The project itself, I can run through it quickly. I can share my screen and just show you the plans, so you know what, what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay. Joanne, can, here we go. All right. So here we have just a layout of the wastewater plant right now. Towards the bottom of the screen is S6F. The wall project is outlined in red. Along the street, the wall ranges from six to eight feet. There'll be a masonry cover on the wall and two gates to get into the facility. As you move towards the left-hand side of the screen and make the turn going up, the wall turns into a sheet pile wall, which runs along the top left of the plan. As you get to the back, that's when we start to transition into an earth embankment. And that, that grade up there is actually not that far off from the design elevation of the 2070 100-year flood event. So as we move along the back of the facility, the berm is one to two feet. And then once we get back towards S6F, that's when it starts to ramp back up. If you guys have driven by there, you can see that there's, you know, the right-hand side of the facility has a greater elevation than the left-hand side. So I'm just going to show you page two. This is a profile view. And I know this might be hard to read for some people, but if you go the top left of the plan, we start at zero, and then it moves along to the right. That follows from the left-hand side of the facility to the right and all the way around. And the orange line depicts the current elevation, where the wall is going. And then the top bold dotted blue line behind that is actually a black line. That's the top of the wall as it goes all the way around the facility. And then each of these lines go down depict the flood elevation for the certain event. So we're designing for the 2070, which is elevation 14.9. The, this is in the AE flood zone, which is an elevation 13. So we're above that for the current standards, and then those projections also have the 2030 100-year flood proposal, which is 12.1. So, you know, in some areas, this wall is, you know, six to eight feet, and then it tapers down as you go through. Yeah, so I mean, that's kind of the breakdown of the projects. We're hoping that, you know, we secure the extra funding and we can get our contractor on board and start up, you know, later on this winter or early spring. And then go through the summer and fall to finish the job. So that's that's what I have for you guys.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep.
Can you minimize your screenshot? Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this? And I would like to note that Ken Costa is on our call. He's our auditor, as well as Pam Toby, who is our Director of Communications and Constituent Services. And also Ethan Foreman from the Gloucester Daily Times is on the call tonight, so thank you. So would anyone else like to speak in favor? I see a hand up.
Yes, councillor, it is John Dunn again. Just want to kind of, you know, say that this is something that is going to be necessary, and we want to have this in place before we go into the secondary treatment facility. So yes, this all kind of leaks into the same idea that we need to protect where that location is, because we're going to be upgrading it in terms of a huge amount of money and facility treatments.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, are there any communications or correspondences, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Councilors, this is your opportunity to ask questions. I'm going to start with counsel grow and then council member.
Thank you, Madam President. A quick clarification, we're only looking at an additional 500,000 on this particular loan order, or we, is it an addition? That's all, we're just topping it up, correct? Because there's already 4.2 that's already been approved.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're only looking at an additional half million on the loan order. For Ryan, two quick questions. Zone AE, what is that? And as far as the concrete wall in the first, in the front, and this is more a question about design, not really the loan order. But how does the concrete wall constructed to prevent the flooding? Because that seems to me that's the most dangerous area in terms of potential flooding. How does that, how does that work?
Sorry about that. Yeah. So the, the design is, you know, we get above the flood elevation and the wall's built to prevent the sea water from getting into the facility. And then onsite, we'll have, we have onsite drainage that will have, will have pumps that we can deploy to, you know, any groundwater that could get in or any stormwater from rain, that'll allow us to keep the site dry. So that's the intention of the design.
And what was zone AE? I didn't, I don't know what that is.
So that's just the FEMA flood elevation for the area. So, you know, those are, the, the design engineers take that into account. FEMA sets those every so, every so often. We just, we got recent maps out a couple of years ago. So, you know, and then you'll hear the term the velocity zone, that's like on the back shore. So, you know, with that, and then also other projections that we have for sea level rise. You know, that allows us to set the elevation benchmarks for, you know, the, the new wall.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Counsel member.
I'm not sure whether this is for Ryan or for John, but you've alluded to it, and I just, for the public's benefit, I want to have you state clearly that the enclosed new wall leaves ample space for the construction of the new secondary treatment plant within the existing site. I know it's preliminary to having any such plans or drawings, but I just want to confirm that your understanding is that this will contain and protect the entire site, which will eventually include a secondary treatment plant.
Well, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to Ryan. I am not an engineer. I can, you know, put some numbers together, but...
I'm more than happy to answer these. So go ahead. So as Community Development Director, I was extremely involved in writing the grant, so I just want to remind this council. Again, you're amending a loan order that was voted by the previous council. We secured a $3.5 million grant from the EDA to build this wall, which isn't my favorite word, but to build this flood barrier. This is about, and we were successful in doing so because this is about economic development. At the end of the day, this is about protecting the city. At the end of the day, this is about the mayor's priority to move forward, whether it's residential or economic development. It's, this is, at the end of the, at the end of the day, protecting our wastewater treatment plant is the number one priority. So of this loan order, $3.5 million is a grant for, from the EDA that the previous council accepted. And yes, we took in, so we have to take all of those things into into account when doing so. And the plan for the secondary treatment was 100% of why we got this grant. So we we were planning for the future, saying, we know that we need, this is where it's going to be, and we know, we understand that, we understand coastal resiliency, we understand the location, but we need to be prepared for the future, and this is where we're located and we're prepared to do so. And that's why the federal government ordered this grant and believes in the work that we're doing. And Ryan then ran with that from there. So as Community Development Director, my job was to work with the EDA. And then we handed over to engineering. So engineering questions, I will absolutely leave to Ryan, but as someone who was involved with the evolution of this project, I thought it was super important for this, this council, who's just amending a loan order, to understand that there was a long history behind this. And I am grateful to the councilors who are here and voted to, to accept that grant in the first place. It was a lot of work. I, again, I prefer that we don't call it the wall. So if anyone else wants to join in on flood barrier for terminology, I'd fully support that. So and, and just again, I, the, we did a lot of public engagement on this process and on the engineering behind it. Pre, pre-zoom, so not recorded, but there's minutes for everything. So if anybody wants some backup or needs any reference, it's all available.
Thank you, Jill. So let's see, I've got Counsel O'Neill's had her hands, hand raised the longest, and then Counsel Gross, and then Counsel Majota. Counsel O'Neill, you have the floor.
Thank you. I was just following up on, I have the same question as councillor Grow. The AE flood zone, what does the A and the E stand for? Must stand for something, right?
Ryan?
The, I'm not sure if the acronym has a meaning behind it, but it's for lowland areas next to water bodies. So the VE zone is for high velocity areas, like up against the coastline. So the AE zone, you'll see like along the high school, you know, those marshy areas. It's all from, it's, it's based off of FEMA maps.
Right, I, I got that. I just was wondering what the letters A and E stood for. It kind of helps me remember what it, what it is. But there is no meaning to the A and E?
I'm sure there is. I can look that up for you.
All right, thank you.
So we have counsel gross for questions. And then counsel Majota.
Yeah, these are for Ryan. So Ryan, we, we talked about, you talked about the gates. How are those gates going to be constructed to act as a water preventive barrier?
Yeah, there, those gates are mechanically deployed, and they have waterproof ceiling between the masonry and the actual metal gate that's out there. Those will have to be deployed by the operation staff. You know, they'll have to assess the situation and then make the call to do that.
Right, so they're, they're only going to be deployed during events.
Yeah, there, there's, well, we'll probably have to have, we'll have to ask the manufacturer on how often we should operate them. But we won't deploy them unless, you know, there's a forecasted event coming in.
Right, okay. My next, and this is sort of less than a question, that I worked there for five years, and I just want people to be aware that the majority, a big portion of this place is already about 15 feet underground. So the groundwater that comes through there, or the, you know, whether it's salt or fresh, has been being dealt with since the, the, before the doors even opened on this plant. So I just want everybody to be aware that the water that's coming up through the bottom is our, there's a lot of experience in dealing with it. And so I just, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that, that that fact, that a ton of this plant is underground. About 15 feet.
Thank you, councillor. Counsel Majota has a question.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. My question is more to Ryan. Will there be like potential street closures? What type of machinery will be used as this is primarily affecting like War III? So and what could people expect? I'm looking towards going to the residents around that area? Just to give my heads up what's going on, but what should I be telling, what should they be expecting?
I don't expect road closures except for occasional heavy equipment being delivered. And even then, I, I think it would be very short term, no more than you know, less than 30 minutes to get equipment in and out. Most of this work is entirely on site. There is the wall along the street, but even then, that's 10, 15 feet off the actual roadway. So there's plenty of space for the contractor to work. I'll know more when they're actually on site and we have meetings, if there is some closures due to some existing utilities that may need to be worked on that are underground in the street. But I don't foresee anything to be impactful for small amounts of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from councilors as part of the public hearing? Counsel Worthley?
Yes, a question for Mr. Dunn, just out of curiosity, and I will be supporting this. Does this additional loan go on to the water rate or under the tax rate?
John Dunn?
John, I think you hit Cameron instead of you.
Yep. So, thank, thank you. So councillor, this will go on to the sewer rate.
Or to the sewer rate? Okay, thank you. And for anybody who's asking, AE is an insurance term for adverse event for flood insurance. So there's a scale on, on how adverse the event is, and that's what this is measuring. Just for information.
For your research.
Happy to provide that.
Any further questions, councilors? Counsel Grow.
I just wanted to clarify, of this 4.7 million dollars, we're going to be reimbursed through the grant, is that correct?
John Dunn?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So we, about three and a half million is coming back to the city in terms of, in the form of...
Right. Exactly, councillor. Yep.
Good deal. Thank you.
I have a question, a follow-up to that. Does that work kind of like MSBA that we get reimbursed as the time that the expenses incurred over time?
That will probably be how that works, councillor. Yes. I mean, so, you know, in the most part, you know, whatever we get some grants, they come back to us as we expend money.
Thank you.
In this case, I think actually we have the, the grant coming in in its entirety. And then depending on, you know, how we expend the money and the total cost of the project, we'll see how it kind of pulls out in the end.
Thank you. Any further questions, councilors, before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask council member to, to to present the committee report. Council member, you are on mute.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the presenters for their thorough presentation regarding this long postponed but essential and major investment in our infrastructure for the future. On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend that the city council approve the loan order amendment as follows. Ordered the loan order 2020-006, certificate of vote 2020-140 of this council, approved September 22nd, 2020, authorizing the borrowing of $4.2 million, $4,200,000 to pay costs associated with the Gloucester Water Pollution Facility Flood Mitigation Project, including costs incidental or related thereto, is amended in its entirety to provide as follows. With the city of Gloucester appropriate $4,700,000 to pay costs associated with the Gloucester Water Pollution Facility Flood Mitigation Project, including costs incidental or related thereto. Then to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under imper sualent to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or Section 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official... The mayor and any other appropriate official the city are authorized to apply for, except and expend any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of the projects. Any premium that's received by the city upon the sale of any bond or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be paid, to be borrowed to pay such costs via like amount. And further order that the Treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws any or all of the bonds authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and I shall move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthley, is there a discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote. Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman? Yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Like to call for a motion for reconsideration.
Hold on a sec, let's, the motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, counselors, is there a motion for reconsideration, Counsel Memard?
So moved, thank you.
Second.
A motion made by Counsel Memard to reconsider, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Discussion? Seeing none? Counsel Memard?
No.
Counsel Nolan?
No.
Counsel O'Hara?
No.
Counsel O'Neill?
No.
Counsel Worthley?
No.
Counsel Gilman? No. Counsel Gross?
No.
Counsel Grow? Counsel Majota?
No.
Motion fails, zero in favor, nine opposed to reconsideration. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Public hearing 2022-036 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 2230, Creative Purpose, Section 22-31, to act in official capacity under the control of the mayor, and Section 22-34 duties.
Thank you, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Are there any questions, Counsel? Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Madam Clerk, are there any communications or correspondences?
There are none.
Counselors, are there any questions? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report.
On a motion by Counsel O'Hara, seconded by Counsel Majota, the Orders Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend GCO, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 2, Administration and Enforcement, Division 2, Traffic Commission, by amendment, Section 22-30, Creative Purposes, Section 22-31, to act in official capacity under the control of the mayor, Section 22-34 duties as follows. Division 2, Traffic Commission, and that will be the entire ordinance, just to make sure that people are clear. As a continuation of plan and board work, and for the purposes promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city, to lessen congestion and confusion in the streets, to lessen the danger from fire, assist the fire, the fighting of it, and facilitate the creation of a more adequate provision for transportation and parking. There is hereby created a traffic commission. The commission shall have as its primary purpose the making, strike of studies and presenting of recommendations to the mayor in the matter of regulating traffic and parking in the city. Section 22-31, to act in an official capacity under control of mayor. The traffic commission shall act in official capacity for the city and shall be under the overall control of the authority of the mayor. And I'd like to move to that large Counselor from East Gloucester, Counsel Grow.
Why, that would be me, I believe. I just want to make a small notation that the way that this is particularly, is written now, except it should not be two sentences, it should be one sentence. If we should take out the period and read, it should read, "Under the authority of the mayor, except in matters involving Gloucester Code of Ordinances and Gloucester Zoning Ordinances." The way it's written, we actually are accepting, taking away from us the ability to use them for Gloucester Code of Ordinances and Gloucester Zoning Ordinance changes. It's a subtle change, but an important one.
So what, so what we're saying is just to simply delete the period and?
And put a comma, put a comma, and make it one sentence. And I'm happy to be corrected, but I'm pretty sure that's what it means.
Counsel Nolan, are you comfortable with that? Because I don't think we have to go and do an amendment, I think we can just change that, right?
I think of the distinguished gentleman from East Gloucester has, there's an error, and I think that can be accepted as read without any further.
Thank you.
I just want to thank my high school English teacher for this, Mrs. Potter, she was.
We'll write our letter, thank you. So continue, Counsel Nolan, with your, with your motion.
So we'll move to Section 22-32, Composition Appointment Terms of Members. The Traffic Commission shall consist of seven members, comprised of the Fire Department, Police Department, Works, and four resident members who shall be at large. These members shall be appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the City Council. Appointments to the commission shall be terms of three years in case of resignation, death, or disqualification of any member of the commission or the purpose of filling a vacancy for any other reason. An appointment for the unexpired term shall immediately be made by the mayor. Section 2233, Organizational Meeting of Officers. As soon as possible after the membership of the Traffic Commission, it is determined each year, the commission shall meet and elect from its own membership person, the Secretary Treasurer to serve the term of one year. The Secretary Treasurer shall give official notice in writing to the mayor that the commission has organized, given their names of the chairperson and secretary treasurer. Section 2234 Duties. It shall be the duty and responsibility of the Traffic Commission. And we are going to strike to make detailed studies of the motor vehicles, add, sorry, consider, vehicles and other forms of traffic within the city, its present and future parking needs and related matters, and determine on a community-wide basis, strike an overall long-range plan to meet the city's needs, as such needs are determined in recommendations for the improvement of conditions accompanied by such maps, graphs, and charge, as may have been repaired, shall be submitted to the mayor. Reserve parking spaces for handicapped persons and disabled veterans as authorized.
Counsel, can you add, add that, just add that before, just state add?
So add, add reserve parking spaces for handicapped persons and disabled veterans as authorized in GZO, Chapter 22, Article 2, Division 2, Section 22-37. Add authority to approve stopper sections as authorized in GZO, Chapter 22, Article 2, Divisions 2, Section 2238. The rest, I believe, remains the same. I will read this, if this is something that the council would like to hear.
Can you just add the very end, Section 2239, the reserved section?
2239, 22-49, reserved.
And did you move it?
I, and I shall move.
Second.
You read it again.
Motion's made by Counsel Nolan, and I think I heard Counsel O'Hara? Yes? Okay, so motion's been made and seconded by Counsel O'Hara. So is there a discussion? And I actually think I'd like to ask that Counsel Gross begins the conversation because this was his order, and he spent a lot of time on this for very good reasons. So would you mind taking the lead in the discussion, Counsel Gross?
Well, I guess it just, the, you know, the first part, let me get up there, where it talks about the duties of the commission, they were really, this was an awful lot of pressure on a commission that doesn't have any staff or budget or anything else. So I thought that it just, you know, since they are really an advisory board, that it would be better to make their, to not have unexpected or unnecessary expectations on them, which was not be, which was unfair. And then also Counsel Worthley pointed out that since we are the, the enactors in the legislating body that deals with the Code of Ordinances and the Gloucester Zoning Ordinances, that we should be able to refer things to the Traffic Commission that are under those, in both of those places in the city government, where before was just under the authority of the mayor. So we can directly refer stuff that is in, or any items that are in the Code of Ordinances or the Gloucester Zoning Code. So that was, that really was the gist of it. You know, the duties didn't have those. They had them pointed out elsewhere, but they also sort of belonged in the duties part. So that really was what it was. It was really to set realistic expectations of this volunteer board and not put undue burden on them where they didn't have the capacity, where they had the expertise, but they just don't have the capacity and they are a volunteer board.
Thank you, Counselor, any further discussion? Counsel O'Neill?
Just have a question, the very last item says Sections 22-39 to 2249, reserved. Reserved for what?
Reserved parking.
Okay, could I answer that question, Madam President?
Yes.
That is, add any other sections to this, any other, if you want to do additional Code of Ordinances under this section. So every time you add a section, okay, it changes the reserve pot. So they added the last Section 38. In the code, we only had 2237. And so 2238 was in another section of Chapter 22, and they added it to this 2238. So it's just reserved to add other Code of Ordinances under that section.
Okay, thank you.
Every time you add one, you have to change the numbering so that the municipal company knows what to do.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Counsel Worthley?
Yes, I just want to thank Counsel Gross for putting the effort into this. I think he's becoming known for the detailed work that he does that brings us ordinance changes that are very precise and on point. And I want to thank you for incorporating the element of adding the council back into this. And it's not really a change, it was that way for a long time, and then it changed four or five years ago for some reason. But I do feel strongly that where we do enact legislation, we should get advice from advisory boards and not necessarily depend on a referral. We can make our own referral to this committee. So I'm pleased to support this, and I think that the other change about asking them not to be responsible for detailed kinds of reports, it's not even fair to them to suggest that they can do the kind of surveying that would be required to have reports that would be relevant. So I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Thanks. Any further discussion, counselors? Counsel Nolan?
The Traffic Commission's one of my favorite boards to work with. They're enthusiastic and very knowledgeable and always there to help. I support them 100%, I respect them, and I think this actually will make their life a little bit easier for the council and for them. I want to thank Tony for all his hard work, and I want to thank Counsel Gross's third grade English teacher for pointing out, hi, oh, sorry, to point out the, the, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman? Yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes, comma, absolutely.
Majota?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Good job, Counsel Gross, thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
If I may?
Go ahead.
So we don't have to rely on the grammar police. I'm going to go to my in-house copy editor from here on.
You're very lucky to have her.
Yep, thank you. I let a slide on this one, but much to my detriment.
You did a good job. So next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Public hearing 2022-037 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Hockers, Peddlers, Transient Vendors, and Special Events, Section 11-7, Business prohibited between certain hours.
Like to open the public hearing and ask if anybody would like to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Are there any question, are there, I'm sorry, are there any communications or correspondences, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Questions, counselors? Seeing none, I will just ask kind of a question, but so we had discussed not going forward and posting this because it was a Scribner's era that we did not delete, provided he or she shall not use any sounding device between the hours of 8:00 PM and 8:00 PM. But we were fortunate that our Madam Clerk had squeezed this in with another ad that we had in the newspaper. So the cost to taxpayers was very, very minimal. And I'm kind of deliberating and not asking a question, but I just felt that I needed to say that to everyone. Counsel Grow, and then we can close the public hearing, any questions?
Yeah, no, you actually brought up exactly one of the things I was looking for in the previous sentence to that. It says, except that a duly licensed ice cream vehicle may sell or offer for sale any ice cream products from his vehicle in the city. And I believe we're trying to go to gender-neutral language in our ordinances. So without making a big change, could we, could we change that to their vehicle? Or I can offer an amendment, Rob, you know?
So right now, we are in the public hearing. So I think that we need to close the public hearing and then we can do that extra stuff. Is there anyone else that would like to ask a question? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Counsel Nolan.
Thank you, Madam President. On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Nolan, the Orders Administration Committee voted roll call, two in favor, zero opposed, one O'Hara absent, to recommend the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Hockers, Peddlers, Transient Vendors, and Special Events. Article 2, Hockers- Article two, hawkers and peddlers, Section eleven dash seven, businesses prohibited between certain hours, subsection A, by deleting in said section as follows. Section eleven dash seven, businesses prohibited between certain hours. A, no vendor should sell or offer for sale any goods, wares, services, or merchandise, including publications, magazines, and books, or solicit subscriptions for publications, magazines, or book in the city between the hours of six P M and eight A M, except that duly licensed ice cream vehicle may sell or offer for sale any ice cream products from strike his and their vehicle in the city between the hours of nine A M and eight P M. Delete, provided he shall not use any sound devices between the hours of eight P M and eight P M. Fixed vendors shall be exempt for prohibited hours during special events, and I so moved as changed.
Second.
Council Nolan made the motion. It was seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion, councilors?
Thank you.
Seeing none, and a thank you from Council Grow. So we are ready for roll call vote. Council Memhard?
Yes, thank you.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
I say yes, and I would just like to thank you for allowing the ice cream vehicles to sell at those hours. Ice cream's important.
Unfortunately, we only have one truck these days, but to, but let's stick with the roll call, but that's that's a good point. I agree with you. We, I love my strawberry shortcakes. Worthley, Council Worthley?
Yes, yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes, thank you.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council O'Neill, you you said yes to, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, councilors. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
An update on the Council on Aging and the Dogtown Preservation Commission by City Council Representative Council Val Gilman, and this was continued from the November twenty-second, twenty-two city council meeting.
So I'm going to go as fast as I can with this, seeing that I posted.
We need to do a vote to reconsider on that because of the January deadline?
No, because it takes thirty-one days anyway. So it's outside of that. It it surpasses that no matter what. Correct, Joanne?
Yes, even if you take a motion to reconsider, all ordinances are in effect, thirty-one days. I don't believe you can change that. So this would go into effect January fourteenth.
Okay, then, no, that's.
Strike that language, yeah, strike that language. It will, I I do want to say that whatever is voted on tonight, I have the certificate of votes ready to go for the quarterly. So as soon as we have the certificate of votes, next week, I will be sending this to MuniCode, hopefully to get on track for quarterly Code of Ordinance updates.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to be pretty quick and upbeat about the Council on Aging report, and I think all city councils have received this really cool newsletter to our mailboxes, and we appreciate getting that as a hard copy. But it it's very popular in Council on Aging meetings and with all the people that go there. So there's just, I think one of the most exciting things that is happening right now in the Council on Aging is that lunches are served at Rose Baker five days a week, which is awesome. On Thursday and Fridays, we have forty to fifty seniors attending, and we're partnered with the Open Door, and there's hot soup made by the chefs at Open Door, and it's just really exciting, and people love going there. And if you're interested in going, you just have to call nine-seven-eight-three-two-five-five-eight-one-four and say that you'll be attending. So please do it. If you're a senior and you're interested in joining these lunches, they're great, they're vibrant, they're exciting, they're social, and the soup is to die for. And then on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays, the lunches there are more or less grab and go, and that's partnered with Senior Center. So some of the things I'd just like to highlight, and I'm just going to run through it very quickly. The Senior Center is constantly reminding people that there's a, if if you're interested and if you're low income and you're interested in getting Comcast, there's a thirty-dollar-a-month new utility that allows, it's a federal program that allows you to get a great discount. This past week, on the twelfth of, or the eighth of December, there was actually a session at Rose Baker on, let's talk about railroad safety, and it was part of Operation Lifesaver, and that was at ten-thirty on October eighth. That was done by the MBTA and organized by Ted Koster and Mayor Verga. And on Wednesdays at one, there's free arthritis exercise classes. There's a free line dance session every Wednesday at nine fifteen. There's chair yoga, nine A M on Zoom and on on Wednesdays. And there's yoga and meditation class, nine-thirty on Mondays. On Friday, December sixteenth, there's an open-door mobile market, free groceries courtesy of the Open Door, and you can sign up by nine-seven-eight-three-two-five-five-eight-one-four, which was really exciting. Council Majota, do you have anything to add to that? Because I know that you are very involved with that.
Yeah, so this particular market will be on the sixteenth this week, and we'll be trying to do a holiday market. So we we'd be doing items that were helping families during the holidays. So we're creating the menu or the items that will be handing out. It's just really great to see some of the seniors there. I know quite a few of them. And it's just great to say hi to everyone. Everyone's very friendly, and you just come by, grab the groceries, and go on your way. It's just, it's a great Friday during the day, and then after that, I believe it's bingo, which a lot of them look forward to, so.
That's great. Thank you. So we have discount trail trash bags that are still there for sixty-five and over, Monday through Fridays, nine fifteen in the morning to three forty-five. We're asking people that are interested to please pay with bills ten dollars or less. Now that it's tax season, there are, in in the next newsletter for January, it will come up with the details on how you can get free tax help. There's a, there's a Cape and Virtual Senior Center on Cable sixty, number sixty-seven, or Channel sixty-seven. It's a program at ten A M every day on, it's a virtual program on Comcast, which you can watch on cable. There's a Christmas party on December fifteenth from eleven-thirty to one. If you're interested in attending, we'd love to see you. It's nine-seven-eight-three-two-five-five-eight-zero-zero to sign up. And there will be hearty lunches, or hearty lunch, holiday treats, music, entertainment, and prizes. On December fifteenth at six P M, we actually are having viewing trips of Christmas lights, and that's going on the Council on Aging van. If you're interested, nine-seven-eight-three-two-five-five-eight-one-four. The first Thursday of every month, Sal Frontero, who's a local attorney, does free legal consults for folks. You can just call nine-seven-eight-three-two-five-five-eight-zero-one. There's a Facebook page, Rose Baker Senior Center Gloucester, if you want to like it and follow what's going on. There's a chess club at one-thirty at the Senior Center. I forget what day it is, but there's just so much. And I guess the the purpose of me mentioning this all to you is that so many great things are happening, the art classes, all the exercise, all the all the the meetings, Senator Carr's there, former mayor Tacon's there once a week to to help with the Shine Program. Just read, read the newsletter, understand what is there, and when we're dealing with seniors in the community that are looking for some interaction and some socialization, Rose Baker is the place to go, and I'm proud to be an ex officio member of the board. And it's, I'm I'm really happy to see all the different great programs that it offers. So any questions from councilors on Rose Baker and Council on Aging Board? Seeing none. The only other thing that I want to touch upon very quickly is the Dogtown Preservation Commission. And we had our first live meeting last month at City Hall. And it was one of those meetings that was probably kind of challenging to us. Council O'Neill was there, and and it was, it was attended by about twenty-five people that were just grateful to be back live. And we, it wasn't a Zoom meeting, it was at City Hall, very well attended. And there were, the the question that people were most concerned with is that they were confused why Dogtown was included in the open space plan, and it was explained why. And then it became kind of a lively conversation about why, and our chair, Cindy Dunn, did a good job trying to explain to people why. And we did allow for a pretty good amount of public comment because it was needed. And I I think at the close of the meeting, most people understood, and and we did the best we could to answer questions without city staff there. So, you know, the the issues that we're still looking at is the possibility down the road of of moving parts of the compost facility to different locations because it's still very understood that the compost facility does sit on conservation land. And so over time, we were trying to see if there were different parts of the compost facility that we could start to outsource to different places. And the first thing that we came up with is possibly the 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 waste that people leave for their leaves. And we were hoping that six times a year, maybe JRM could, we could contract and and take that waste, sticks and the brush, and move it to a different post instead of stashing it in Dogtown at the compost center. So that was one step, and that's why we were looking into possible CPA grants. But we were asked by city administration rightfully to first do some best practices and learn what other municipalities would do. And so we're going to get back to sharing all that at our next meeting and then making a recommendation to to city administration. And then Dogtown mapping and just different programs that are happening, things that we are hoping to do just to just to make sure that Dogtown was safe and clean and and well-mapped and all good things. So you'll see the minutes when they come out, and they'll be publicized, and I look forward to continuing to serve on this commission. Any questions about that? Okay, so that's the report, and I'm sorry that I put it off the last two meetings, but we're making good headway today. So I appreciate you allowing me to present. So next order of business, Madam Clerk?
At the Council's request to the mayor.
All right, so we're going to start with Council Memhard.
Thank you very much. I don't have so much of any questions as some thank yous for the mayor. I'm very much looking forward to the presentation when the administration is ready to share it with us on the the mayor's private road task force and the opportunity for us to act on some of the recommendations that the mayor's office will be endorsing in that, from that task force's efforts. I wanted to thank the DPW and the mayor's office for the recent resurfacing of Marina Drive, including some sidewalk work. Very, very much appreciated. Of course, right away, people are concerned about people speeding once the potholes are gone. So it's a, it's a vicious circle. And then all the side roads like Cabo and Loma and the other ones, which are still private roads, were salivating at the work that was being done and stopped at their entrances, at the part of potholes and their entrances. It was a little painful there. I would say that Beach Road and Brightsett Avenue are sort of stalled in terms of that program, and so that's an ongoing challenge after the short-term patching with work that was paid for privately by some of the butters. And then the third thing is the Haskell Court, water line and sewer and potentially, and paving, potentially sewer, work that will be coming back to you. The mayor's office has been very helpful doing some additional research, and it may require us, and Sean Nolan and I will be working with the mayor and Councilor, Council Suzanne Egan, to see if we need to adopt a new state-approved roadway betterment regulations and that will allow us to be of more assistance to the private Haskell Court property owners. Right now, there are some limitations as to how we can help them, what we can do. So thank you to the administration.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Nolan?
I have no request right now. I just want to think about the fact that it's our last meeting for the year. And it's been a great pleasure to serve with you guys for this year. I look forward to the next year. I want to wish every one of you the best of the holidays, and hopefully two thousand twenty-three brings as much success, if not more, than what we've been able to do for our city. So thank you all for all your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor. Council O'Hara?
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor. I met with the mayor in his office yesterday afternoon, and I thank him for his time. We talked about fire hydrant testing, that that's ongoing, regular basis. The DPW is working on installing hydrant markers. We discussed body cameras on our police officers to help protect our police officers and the public. And probably something which is very important to me and many others, the Magnolia Pier. The mayor had said that they're working up a plan where they'll allow community dinghies or prams off the, off the float that they'll be installing this spring summer. So that was welcome news to mayors. Also, I want to just mention that tomorrow, Dana Farber Craft Family will be holding their last blood drive at the Magnolia Library as, and that's from eleven-thirty to six. If anyone would like to donate, there are plenty of open spots. We'll be moving to, and I thank Councilor O'Neill, we'll be moving to Our Ladies the, in the parish hall, and thank you, special thanks to Father Jim. Magnolia Library does not wish to have Dana Farber. Red Cross will also be moving to Lady of Good Voyage as the Magnolia Library raised their rental fee to a point where it's no longer economical for them, Red Cross, to operate blood drives. And probably another important entity that will be moving to Our Ladies is the New England Organ Donor Bank, as we were always looking for folks during blood drives to become organ donors. And please feel free to participate in that wonderful cause. A special thanks to Council Gilman and Council Majota and his wife, and Council O'Neill, and past councilors Melissa Cox and Steve LeBlanc, they're regular donors to the blood drives. I also want to just mention that with with hydrant testing, that the residents this time of the year, that unfortunately with a high price of heat, that people will be seeking alternative means that unfortunately, there may be fire. If you ever have a fire in your house, don't ever try to put it out. Call nine-one-one, let the professionals respond as quickly as possible, because in fire situations, seconds count and minutes kill, and there's so much meaning behind that word. because in fire situations, seconds count and minutes kill, and there's so much meaning behind that word or statement. Check your numbers on your house, your houses, so you can make sure that they can respond to the right location. And most importantly, I want to, during the special time of the year, to the men and women of our armed forces who will, who protect us around the world and will be away from their families. Thank you very much for your service. Happy New Years and very Merry Christmas. Thank you to everybody.
Thank you, councillor. Council O'Neil.
Yes, thank you. I would like to request that the mayor require all boards and commissions to record their meetings on Zoom. There are a number of meetings, Gloucester Cultural Council. I can't attend these meetings, and if they're on Zoom, I can watch them over the weekend or during the, during the week. Fisheries Commission, I can't make that one. Open Space and Rec, so you're free. Those are just from December thirteenth to December twenty-first that I wrote down, those four commissions that are meeting within the next two weeks, and I cannot attend those and would like to be able to watch them on Zoom. I was looking, I can't remember what board or commissioner it was, and the minutes were from October, so the minutes are lagging, and Zoom is instant. And I would, so I'm asking the mayor to require that the boards and commissions record the meetings on Zoom. If they need help and how to do that, I'm certainly, certainly eager to help them learn how to use Zoom. Thank you.
Can I just add to that? So in the packet for this tonight, there's a response to, I believe it's Keith Palazzola, who spoke in public comments on this. And the mayor's response was clearly consistent with what you just said. His goal is to make all of, ultimately is for all the meetings to be hybrid, and that's something that they're looking into. So I encourage you to read that letter.
I read it.
Okay, so that's, that's optimistic, I believe. And in the issue, something that Ryan has talked to us about is that he's trying to look at all the locations and trying to make all the locations to be user-friendly to Zoom. In the past, we've had to have people that are licensed Zoom folks. Joanne knows what that's like, and we're transitioning to a different type of process now. And we went through that when we were doing our ward meetings last year. We had to have Zoom-licensed folks to be able to start and end and be on the calls, and we just didn't have the amount of resources. But I think there's gonna be a new process, and I thought that it was encouraging to see what he said to Keith, so. Anyway, but thank you. That will be your request, and I'm sure he'll let you know. Thank you.
And happy holidays and Merry Christmas, everyone.
You too. Thanks. Next is Council Worthley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a number of requests. I'll go as quickly as I can. I want to thank the mayor for responding to requests I made late winter, early spring to remove lights from, broken lights from the trees on Main Street. The second part of that is to replace them. I don't think we'll have time to do it for this season, but I would like to remind everyone that, I think it was councillor Ken Hecht, played a big role in organizing the funding and the execution of getting the lights in the trees. And the lights in the trees aren't just for a seasonal holiday sort of thing. This, this study is done for mental health in terms of light and also for safety, to have a little more light downtown where people will be walking. I'd like to put a request in officially start over the next few months, ready for next season, next holiday season to have new lights put in the trees, and I'd be happy to help in regard. I'd like to request, I think it's been made a few times, but we approved a hundred thousand dollar request for one authorization for an engineering firm to look at the creek. And I think that was March, April-ish. And we haven't seen results yet. I'd like to put that request in. I know we haven't even started winter yet, but summer will be here before we know it. I want to give a thanks and a credit to councillor Nolan. He organized the Woodwood Ave neighborhood, and they've pitched in altogether to repair the street. I think Mike Nocella gave a great offer, and the neighborhood really coalesced around Shaun, councillor Nolan's leadership. The street is in great shape now. It's a temporary fix, but it is a much better situation than it was before. So good job, Shaun, and the neighbors there as well. Last year around this time, there were five of us that were brand-new to the council, and all of us had just come off an election. And I think that the Sunset Clause and outdoor dining caught a lot of us by surprise. That was December thirty-first, and it wasn't until about May of this spring that it came to our attention that there were some restaurant owners that hadn't heard or didn't know where things stood. I'd like to put a request in the mayor's office to come back to the council with either they're supporting or not supporting doing that again this year, so we can act on it more quickly. I think we really lost, for people who benefit from outdoor dining, both from the customers and the restaurants, I think we lost about a month where we could have had people dining, and that obviously is good for residents. It's also good for our bottom line in terms of meals tax. So I put that request in. I'm almost done. Early this spring, we had a lot of requests for playground maintenance improvements. I'd love to put a request in, make it official, paper trail, are we doing something? What can we do? What can we do as a council to be looking at a better situation in the spring for our playgrounds? Also, Memhard raised it tonight, and at our budget and finance meeting, about should the city or can the city make some sort of role, have some role in incenting, incentivizing fishermen to help us with the green crab situation, and I'd like to put that request officially and double down on councillor Memhard's commentary on that. Almost done. Council Majota, good work on, I think you put a request in the mayor on Centennial Ave. We had put together an order initially, and before this change to the Traffic Commission, it was clear it needed to go to the mayor's office. And I think one of the requests was very specific with lighting, and I'm glad you put it in. I don't know that it's been done yet, but there was another accident, another pedestrian hit by a car at an intersection. That would make fifty-four accidents in the last five years, that intersection. So I just want to draw people's attention for us as individuals to be safe when we're driving there and for the public, but also put the request in again, doubling down on councillor Majota's request for lighting in that area. And then lastly, I don't know if it's a governance meeting, but we are at the halfway point in our year, in our term. There would be some value in a public setting to, I don't know how we do it, but to set some general goals. I think this has been a remarkable year for us all, learning on the fly and working together. I'd like to see if we could set some goals for the next year. Election years get a little crazy, can get crazy sometimes when we're also trying to work together on things, and I'd like to see us have some goals. So that's it for now. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Hope everyone is healthy and well and a prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Council Gross.
Yeah, I don't have any requests from the mayor. Just want to wish everybody happy holidays, Happy New Year. Hope it's healthy and safe, and enjoy.
Council Grow.
Likewise, I submitted all my requests to the mayor. I just wish you all and your families a happy, healthy, and peaceful holiday season and a productive year coming up for the council.
Thank you, Council Majota.
No request. I'll just piggyback what Council Gross and Gross said. Just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and it's been a fun first year. So thank you.
Thanks, and I just have one brief thing I wanted to mention. So I think for those of you who were at the At-Large debate at Lanesville Community Center last year, I had brought up the possibility of getting council input more proactively in the process of budget setting. And councillor Nolan and I spoke to our CAO, Joe Cahill, and Mayor Verga last week a little bit about it. And they liked the idea and concept, so they just want to make sure that we're clear with how the budget process works. And so what I'm gonna be recommending that we do during the months of January and February is each of us have an award meeting. And that'd be one of the many things that we'd want to talk about, so getting some input from our ward constituents. The At-Large councils can sit and listen and, and get some thoughts, and then report it to, back to administration before the penning process starts. And with that, I can give some other suggestions of things that you might want to talk about. But I think at this point, our constituents probably would just like to have the floor to bring up the things that they want to talk about instead of what we want to talk about. So I'll develop a format of how I think that we could do some surveying of the folks in terms of budget process, so we could have some consistency there. And all I would ask you to do is, I'll send the calendar for the months of January and February. You know what nights were busy and what nights were off. And we can just start to make, to book some of the halls that we might use in our wards to get that on the docket, because I think our constituents would really enjoy having a little bit of input. And, and it's a good time to continuing some in-face conversations with folks in our ward. So I look forward to doing that, and, and that's it. So thank you, councilors. It's been, it's been a very busy year. We've had ups, we've had downs, we've had success. We've had hiccups, but I think we're all working hard at being good communicators and working professionally with our constituents and with each other. So thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call vote. Council Memhard.
Yes, and good night. Thank you.
Council Nolan.
Yes, and good night, everybody. Thank you.
Council O'Hara.
Yes, thank you very much.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes, and good night.
Council Worthley.
Yes, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Council Grow.
Yes, Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year.
Council Majota.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank you, Joanna.
Night.